So welcome. Thank you. So, welcome to the regular council meeting of Midland Council Wednesday, September twenty eighth. Two, this is a hybrid meeting, so some of the counselors are joining us by Zoom and the remainder, of course, are in chambers with you. So I'll call this meeting to order, and I'd just like to read the the land acknowledgements. The town of Midland recognizes that it is located on land, which is the traditional and treaty territory of the Anishinaabe people. Now known as the Chippewa Tri Council comprised of Bosley First Nation, Rama First Nation, and the Georgina Island First Nation. This territory is located within the pre Confederation Treaty Five and Treaty Sixteen, and located within the Williams Treaties nineteen twenty-three. The town of Midland recognizes that it is located on land, which is the traditional territory of the Huron-Wendat and the historic homelands of the Métis, and that our town is home to a large and diverse community of indigenous peoples. With that, I'd like to invite you to join me with a moment of silent reflection, and perhaps you might think of our fellow countrymen on the east coast who have just experienced devastation from the hurricane and think of them in your thoughts for the next minute or so. Thank you. Thank you very much. At this point, I'd like to ask council if there are any declarations of pecuniary interest. Counselor Downer.
Yes, thank you, your worship under report seventeen point two this evening. I would like to declare a conflict of interest as I am in that senior's age group.
That's a good point, so am I. I guess I'm going to have to declare and hand it over to the deputy mayor. Thank you for that. I guess we'll both have to inform the clerk and provide the appropriate paperwork. Thank you, counselor. So next we have approval of the agenda. It's moved by Counselor Gordon, seconded by Counselor Downer, that the contents of the regular council agenda for September twenty eighth, twenty twenty-two be approved as amended as follows. Adding the following item under section twelve, reports to other items withdrawn from consent agenda for council's consideration includes presentations by consultants regarding report under consideration. Twelve point two staff report CSR dash two zero two two dash six zero holding removal lots one, two, three, and four, AKA block twenty-seven. MDT dash T dash zero one, one, nine Bayport Village. Adding the following items under sections eighteen bylaws. Eighteen point two bylaw twenty twenty-two dash fifty, bylaw to amend zoning bylaw two zero zero four dash ninety as amended for the removal of holding symbol H. It's symbol on block twenty-seven of the August twenty nineteen draft plan of subdivision, which is intended to become addressed lots five, ten, five, twelve, five, fourteen, and five, sixteen Bayport Boulevard. Item eighteen point three bylaw twenty twenty-two dash five, one. A bylaw to authorize the transfer of only that portion of reserve block ninety-four fifty-one M dash nine, five, three down of Midland Central County that lies adjacent to the land coinciding with the Bayport Boulevard frontage block twenty-seven with the August twenty nineteen draft plan of subdivision file MD dash T dash one, one, nine, which is intended to become addressed lots five, ten, five, twelve, five, fourteen, and five, sixteen Bayport Boulevard Boulevard rather to abutting landowners. Removing item five point four point one CSR two zero two two dash four seven zoning bylaw amendment ZDA dash zero five, zero, two through five dash two zero removal of holding symbol, the Quentin Holdings Inc. two nineteen Queen Street. Removing item eighteen point one bylaw two zero two two dash four zero a bylaw to amend zoning bylaw two zero zero four dash nine zero as amended for the removal of the holding symbol on two nineteen Queen Street. So council, you've heard the motion, comments, or questions with respect to the agenda. Deputy Mayor Ross.
Thank you, worship through you. I wonder if you could share maybe through you to to our staff that holding symbol, sorry, five point four point one is being removed. Could you share the reason for that? It looked like a great win story that we're going to move a zoning forward on that property. If you could just share with me, maybe Mr. Campbell could help or our CEO or.
Mr. Farquharson, it looks like you're getting ready to answer. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Two nineteen Queen Street, that is a removable hole. The outstanding item is an executed site plan agreement back from the applicant as well as the associated securities being provided. I believe this is the second time we put it on there. We've been trying to keep the application going forward and hoping of getting the agreement back. But well, fortunately, we haven't had it submitted back to us, executed for us to register it. So that's why we're recommending it be pulled. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that, and I appreciate the info. We hear all the time that the town of Midland is slow getting things done, and we here we are. We've had it on the agenda. We're going to move something forward, and no behold, the applicant didn't get his stuff in in time, so I appreciate the update. I'm sorry to hear that. It's the second time, but hopefully it moves forward in the future when the new council will be here to deal with it. Thank you, worship.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, maybe third time lucky.
Yes.
Councilman again, I saw your hand and Counselor Gordon.
So the reason I put my hand up and I should have done it a little bit sooner was that the motion that you're going to declare pecuniary interest on, you presented. So I wanted to bring that up as soon as possible. And that when the time comes to get to it, I hope it's not going to cause an issue. So just to respond to it at the time that it was spoken of. It's also a motion that I was hoping to second. When we get there, I would be willing to bring it forward because it's something that I brought up about three and a half years ago.
Thank you, counselor. Madam Clerk, is there an issue with my being the proponent? We can transfer that. I think Deputy Mayor Ross said he would take that on.
I think that would be fine.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam.
Counselor Gordon.
Thanks. I'm just going by the agenda that's published on Civic Web, and I don't have any of the add-on stuff for block twenty-seven. Is it available electronically for people to follow along and see, or is there a paper copy I could have to follow along tonight?
I believe there's a report being presented verbally, but I'm not sure. Madam Clerk.
Through you, your worship, to Counselor Gordon, this is a walk-on report, and it will be attached to the agenda after the meeting for the public's review.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So with, I'll call the question on the agenda, all those in favor. Thank you, that carries. Next, we have a consent agenda item moved by Deputy Mayor Ross, seconded by Counselor Cunningham, that the items and related recommendations contained within the September twenty eight, twenty-two consent agenda as consent to items having been considered by council be adopted. Comments or questions with respect to consent agenda? Just so the audience knows, these are items that have been before council prior to this meeting. They're deemed to have been read and understood and agreed when we approve the consent agenda. Council's agreeing to those items. So there are things like letters to council that have occurred over the past two, three weeks, reports or asks of from the public and so on. So I'd letters from other communities that council has read, understood, and is now passing. I hope. So with that, all in favor. Thank you, that carries as well. So we now have a motion to move into committee of the whole. So moved by Councilman Main, seconded by Counselor Oshinsky. The council resolved into committee of the whole. All those favorite. Thank you, that carries. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, worship. Welcome, everyone. This is my second last meeting. I officially retire after November, and today we have a presentation for the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two OH, so sorry, OMHA Champions Midland Under Fifteen Rep Team. And this, I tell you, I sit on council for twelve years. This is one of my favorite things when we have people from our community that do wonderful things. So congratulations to you guys, and I'm going to turn it over. I understand Kim Berry is here to represent the team. Kim, if you'd like to come forward, we have a mic here. Maybe if someone could get it on for her and introduce this wonderful accomplishment by these guys. You're going to remember this for the rest of your life. And congratulations, and I'll turn it over to you, Kim. Thanks for coming this evening.
All right. Thank you for having us. I guess I would like to start by introducing the players. They were players on the U fifteen rep team. And a few, well, I'll introduce them first before I get into the good stuff. So we have Mason Downs. We have Owen Fuller. Cole Warren. Cohen Smith. Blake Wiker. Curtis Warren. Tyson Berry. Owen Clennett. Drew Robson. Camden Elson. Ethan Barron. Mason Fitzgerald. Brody Berry. Cameron Rollinson. And we do have two players that are away today, Cameron Mullin and Matthew Landry. The coaching staff included the head coach Spencer Warren. And we had two assistant coaches, Mark Fuller and Jeff Wiker. Our trainer was Daryl Clennett. And I'm Kim Berry. I was the manager. So the team record for the year was pretty incredible. We played forty-six games in total with forty-one wins, four losses, and one tie. Yeah, that equals forty-six. Perfect. They won the OMHA Tier One Championship, which is where they received their medals and their red hats. And they also won the Regional Silver Stick Championship that was hosted here in Midland. So it was a super fantastic year.
Thank you.
Oh, could you share with us where the where they actually competed, where they where they waited, who they beat? I died to know what community we won in the final. Sorry to put you on the spot.
Oh, so the final championship game was versus our old run, Saint Mary's. And it was hosted in Barry that year.
Congratulations. Way to go. I know we're going to ask if we could, if we get all the players to come up and stand against us, well, we'd like to get a picture with you and the mayor. It would be fantastic. Thanks so much, and congratulations once again. Congratulations, gentlemen. Great work, and thank you so much for representing the town of Midland. Greatly appreciated, and keep it up. Good luck this year. We'll give it a minute for the room to clear, and we'll we'll move on. Apology. Thank you so much. Once again, congratulations to the Under Fifteen Rep Team. Pretty amazing record, forty-one and four. Wow. Anyway, Mr. Dino, was your team ever that good? Sorry. Anyway, first up, we have a couple of items withdrawn from the consent agenda. First one being that staff report CSR dash two thousand twenty-two dash fifty-nine, the two thousand and twenty-two asset management plan dated September twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-two be received. And one, that council accepted report for information. And two, that council adopt the asset management plan in accordance with Ontario Regulation five, eight, eight dash one, seven Asset Management Plan of Municipality Infrastructure. And I mean, a mover and a seconder, if I could. Moved by Counselor Oshinsky, seconded by Counselor Main. Any questions or comments with regards to this item? Counselor Main.
Thank you. What an incredible, robust report. Thank you too.
I apologize, Counselor Main. I got to stop you there. I was supposed to go to Mr. Sorry, to our Mr. Campbell, sorry, Mr. Campbell, to give us a quick update before we ask for questions. I apologize. Thank you, Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Yes, the Asset Management Plan, this is a report that has to be written under regulation to the province of Ontario on a regular basis. This council, you passed an asset management policy back in two thousand and nineteen. This is the first major report that had to be done for the province, and there's an additional report in two thousand twenty-four that will be the the next milestone report that we have to write. One of the interesting things in this, this report is just about our core assets. And core assets mean our roads, our water system, our wastewater system, and our stormwater system. So the numbers that are presented in the items in this report do not include our assets for parks, all our playground structures, our buildings, and all our furniture and assets inside those. Our fleet, all our trucks, all our large equipment, our snowplows are not included in this costing. Transit is not included in this costing. The library facility isn't in it, and also our fire and fire stations are not in this. So when you look at these numbers, you might think it's a big number of that of assets that we own and liabilities that we have. But it doesn't represent everything, and it's already a huge number. The very front page of that report, which is attached to it, you can see the assets that are considered right now are four hundred and fifty million dollars worth of assets that we have in these core assets. And the when you look, take a look at what the costs are projected to keep these in a operational state. This report is saying that we're underfunding those. And we're not underfunding them by a little. It's being underfunded in this report by nine hundred and fifty dollars per household per year right now.
Wow.
So, and that's just for these assets. And this is, you know, as we go through budgets, as you've gone through over the last few years, you've heard me every year say, we got to put money in the bank for the future. We got to put money in the bank in the future. Well, well, this is the quantification, our current quantification of how much we aren't funding them through our current budgets at the town of Midland. And, you know, the next council and the next budget will be dealing with this deficit. And as we go forward and start to do this same evaluation for the balance of our assets, you, you know, we've seen that add. And one thing that's in the regulation that future council will have to do every year is explain why aren't they funding this to the level to meet the service level that we stated is our requirement? And what does that mean? As an example, a road lasts twenty-five to thirty years, maybe thirty-five years. But with our current funding, we only replace that road every hundred years. So luckily, we were in pretty good shape with our roads, but if we keep continuing on the current rate we're going, that's what roads might look like in the future. So the provinces through this regulation is really just trying to get council in their budgets to be able to focus on what these demands are and help council and the taxpayers and ratepayers understand the liability, because all our assets, it doesn't matter what we say, they're going to wear out. And some might be more important than others, and that's why we're focusing on roads, water and wastewater, and we certainly know the importance of roads for our commerce and economy and water and wastewater for the safety of our residents and and our our water and household living. So that's why they're first on the list. So this report, really at this point, it's highlighting some of the issues. It's highlighting some of the service level standards that are commonplace out there. And the consequences if we don't consider what the impact of those are in future budgets. The recommendation, as per the regulation, is that council just received this and that it's published on our website. And Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing uses this when it considers future grant applications that we make to the province. And without, I'll take any comments or questions.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Appreciate the update. Counselor Main.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I was just going to ask for a brief overview, and you just did that. That's fantastic. Thank you to Emily Morton. This is a lot of work to go through this, and it's very important to review the infrastructure. This is a very dense report, lots of numbers, some great little maps on here for people that want to know where are the town's sanitary system are, or is where the town's water distribution system is. But just kind of a general question is, so do we compare our assets and how well we're doing with others in terms of comparison? Because obviously, we have some reds, we've got some oranges, we've got some blues, greens, so assets in various different conditions, obviously, bad and failing assets are very not good, especially water. We have water main breaks. That's not good. Sewer backups or sewer breaks, that's also very bad. So I guess you're just saying there's, you highlighted that we're underfunding infrastructure replacement. But what other conclusions that can be made from looking at the report and about how well our assets are aging? Thank you.
Mr. Campbell.
Through you, Deputy Mayor. Counselor Main, you're very correct. This does provide a lot of other useful information for how do we plan our capital budget? How do we plan our replacements? And it's by looking at the service level, and if the measurement is the number of main breaks we have, by analyzing that, we would focus on, you know, what pipe would be on top of the priority to be fixed. So yes, we we do use this data, and it's, you know, one thing that we're doing better on, and that's why part of this whole asset management journey that we're on right now, the town did get a grant to invest and implement new asset management software, which is citywide. And this report is the first data output of that new software, which is giving us new reporting techniques and technologies to use data analysis to help us in our planning in the future.
All of Counselor Main.
Thank you. Yeah, there's some of the numbers that kind of really pop out on the one chart of total replacement costs, and they spiraled north of ten, twenty, thirty, hundred-plus million dollars for water, wastewater, storm, and our road network. So that's assuming over the life of the assets. Or is it the total replacement cost? It's basically if we had to go and fix every single thing today, that's the present day cost of the replacement of all the assets. Thank you.
Through you, Deputy Mayor. Yes, four hundred and fifty million is if you had to replace it today. That's the estimate of what the total replacement cost would be today. But in our crazy construction market, it might be way more than that, but a reasonable estimate, it would be, you know, half a billion dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Any other questions? I've, Mayor Strathairn, then Counselor Gordon.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, through you to Mr. Campbell. Is there a corresponding financial management plan that's going to accompany this document? We don't, clearly, we don't pay it all through the levy. There's different ways of doing this through debts or through reserves or through grants and so on.
Through you, Deputy Mayor, to the mayor. The regulation, when it first came out, had a clause in it that would require councils in two thousand twenty-four to create a financial plan for all of the assets. The current regulation, because they've made amendments over COVID and some other things, specifically mentions now the financial plan for water, which we have, a financial plan for wastewater. We don't have an official one. We have an unofficial plan for that, so we have to beef that one up a bit. And it's silent right now on the balance of the assets, other than it says an explanation of how the municipality will manage the risk associated with not undertaking any of the lifecycle activities identified in paragraph or in subparagraph I. So it's going to force a the other thing we have to do is annually bring back a report to council now, and it would be through that is due in July of each year. So I presume in the future, we'll go through the budget process. We'll see what the outcome of council's decision on funding the capital plan will be. And then we would be have be having to come back to council with a report of that would discuss managing the risks associated with underfunding. So we haven't had one of those reports yet, but it's now a requirement for us to to look at.
Follow up, your worship.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, through you to Mr. Campbell. It strikes me whether the the regulation requires it or not when we look at the numbers involved in your core assets and then the other assets that you've listed. It seems to me that it would be prudent to start to map out a fiscal monetary plan, their fiscal plan that allows us to strategy that allows us to at least understand the magnitude of the problem and maybe push a little harder to the province. I mean, when you look at municipalities taking one nine cents of every dollar, a tax dollar in the country, the rest goes to the province and the feds. Maybe we should pushing them a lot harder to contribute to this, to this, we'll call it asset deficit.
Yeah, and I think that's really critical why the this report and future reports will be going to the province to again, help educate the province on the deficit problems that municipalities like Midland have, and hopefully we can use this to help generate more grants in the future to help resolve this.
Thank you, Mr. CEO. Something yet?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and I would like to add my appreciation to Emily and the rest of the team for pulling together this report. It is, it is part of what I would certainly say is the financial stabilization plan that this council's been working on. For the last two budgets, at least, we've done a ten-year projection on our capital needs. We've, we've shown what state of our reserve capacity is. We've brought forward various recommendations on how to generate funds to potentially assist with those reserves. But we've also been very, very active in advocacy for Midland. And that's resulted in, so, you know, very good grants that we've been able to achieve. That can't stop, obviously. This type of analysis and using the data and the technology that, again, council has approved allows us to demonstrate this, you know, this professional data to both the the province and the feds, if necessary, to help them assist us, but also to make sure that, you know, our taxpayers understand why the Midland taxes are where they are. I mean, we have a lot of stuff in Midland, and we're just talking about the, you know, the important stuff. A lot of the stuff you can't see. We're not talking about the fun stuff, you know, that you can see, like the rec centers, you know, that are going to require rehabilitation. But, you know, we think we've, we've got a good plan to help stabilize it. There are certainly lots of things we need to continue to do, but There are certainly lots of things we need to continue to do, but I would give this council a lot of credit to putting a lot of the pins in place to do the analysis, so we understand the problem and we can attack it and get the right attention around it.
Thank you, Mr. Dino. Councilor Gordon, you have a question?
Thanks, question and actually a couple of them. I'll start with the first one for Mr. Campbell. Clearly, there's a huge gap in this analysis because of the things that weren't in scope. And I'm just wondering, all those assets that you've mentioned are rolling stock and our fire department and the playground equipment that we just went through, you know, or we're still going through replacement because we, you know, failed to plan, plan to fail. These things you've highlighted that aren't in the study, what, what's the rationale for that? How come they're not in scope? Did we choose not to do that or is that another, another report that needs to be generated?
Mr. Campbell?
Through you Deputy Mayor, Councilor Gordon. Right now, the, the regulation has timelines that we have to meet. So the timeline for the balance of those is, I want to say, two thousand twenty four for the balance of those assets. So we, that's Emily and the team will be working on over the next year, collecting all the asset condition for those, for the balance of those items and then starting to figure out what the, the costs are, get into our software. And then we have in July of two thousand twenty four, have to create this report on the entire scope of town assets. So it's just, you know, we're doing, we're meeting the reg, the regulation, we're not exceeding the regulation right now from, because of time constraints. And as I said, we've just implemented this new software that we got a grant for. And it's taken almost a year to get that going and get data in and start to understand how to get good data out of it.
All up?
Thanks. So, I mean, this clearly just speaks to the criticality of controlling our spending. You know, we've got such a high taxation rate right now and the projections from staff for two thousand twenty three for the next council is that five to six percent increase, I'll say we start with. It couldn't even be worse by the time it lands on their desks. And that's without correcting any of these gaps that you've just mentioned, because we don't even know what we don't know yet about all these other major assets and infrastructure. So in my mind, all you're doing is reinforcing the fact that we need to really double down in this municipality on responsible growth and get those development charges in and, and spread the pain of this municipality and all of our aging assets over more ratepayers. I'm just wondering though, in your analysis, and perhaps this is more for the CIO, is I wonder if we're facing any challenges seeking real funding? I mean, like material funding for some of this replacement while we have our twenty million invested in the bank that, you know, other equally needy communities perhaps don't have that, that cash in the bank from the PUC sale. Is that, that money sitting in the bank, do you think, is that impeding our ability to go and look needy to the province and to the feds when we're looking for major funding for this capital, you know, replacement?
Thank you, Councilor Gordon, again, through you Deputy Mayor to Councilor Gordon. I, I don't see that as an impediment at all, certainly when we're, we're going forward for grant subsidies of that kind. It's, it's, you know, we've been fortunate to sell some assets and have some of those funds put aside for community initiatives or for funding some of our capital needs. But again, as, as I think this council knows, for a very long time, Midland has not received the same amount of government funding through OMPF that other municipalities have. And if you just took the average OMPF that was provided to some of the municipalities in this area, they would have accumulated well over twenty million dollars just from government funding. You know, and Midland has accumulated maybe two. You know, there's a huge, huge disparity there and, you know, there's, there's a reason it's not done incorrectly. But it has been a challenge and certainly from, from our opinion, it's one of the main reasons why Midland's tax rate is so high. We have not been able to contribute to reserves and we've not been able to provide subsidization to the Midland tax rate. So as an example, that five or six, you know, the four to five percent projection on the tax rate that was in the staff budget, if you took the average OMPF, that will be provided to municipalities in this area. And you took the delta that Midland doesn't receive, that tax rate would be somewhere between one and two percent. So if you normalize it, that's where Midland would be. So it is a huge contributor to what is, what the impact is. So we're fortunate to have some money. It's not the dire situation in Midland. I don't want us to paint that. I think there's good, been good financial management. But there's a consequence of having a large municipality like ours with lots of assets, lots of assets and not as much government funding with very little growth in the past. Now we're starting to see the growth to Councilor Gordon's point. And you know, to other councillors have made that point, growth, I think, is an important aspect of our recovery. Not the only aspects, but an important one that I think we need to take advantage of, so.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments with regards to this item? Last question, Councilor Maine?
Thank you. I think we talked about this a couple of years ago when we were talking about this report being upcoming. So we were talking about that you're, you mentioned, you know, parks and other things, other assets potentially adding into the asset management. And we also talked about natural assets, natural heritage assets, calculating that. Gibson B.C. is a famous example. They did that probably about five or 10 years ago and calculated all the value of the forests and their waters, you know, wetlands and streams and stuff like that. Is that in the legislation that we will get that by the next round and, you know, within the next reporting period in five years' time? That that will be something that will add to the asset management reporting regime? Thank you.
Mr. Campbell?
Through you Deputy Mayor. Yes, the trees and tree cover and that are on town properties is deemed an ass, our asset that we have to quantify as part of the next report. So we have a portion of our trees already inventoried. But I think about twenty five percent of our trees are inventoried by species and locations. So we have to, over the next year, finish that inventory. And what we do have right now is in a layer in our GIS system, so you could pull up a tree inventory of what is on town property, but not on private property.
Thank you. I'm going to call the vote. There's going to be a lot of discussion for the new council with regards to this item and many others. And was moved by Council Chesky, second by Council Maine. All those in favor? So Carrie, thank you everyone.
Next item up is that staff report CSR two thousand twenty two dash sixty, holding removal lot one, two, three and four, AKA block twenty seven, M D dash T dash zero one one nine Bayport Village Phase Two dated September twenty eighth, two thousand twenty two be received. And further that the site plan subdivision agreement for the proposed lots one, two, three and four, as known as block twenty seven, M D dash T dash zero one one nine Bayport Village Phase Two be signed by the mayor and clerk upon receipt from Caitlin Corporation of the following. As further set out in report CSR dash two thousand twenty two dash sixty to the satisf, satisfaction of the executive director of planning, billing and bylaw in consultation with the town solicitor in according, accordance with the town bylaw requiring required application, processing fees and charge, charges, sorry, required subdivision revision application, outstanding clearance as set out in this report and requirements of this site plan subdivision agreement as executed site plan subdivision agreement and all required materials by quick Caitlin. And further that holding removal bylaw two thousand and twenty two dash fifty be approved as applied to proposed lot one, two, three and four, also known as block twenty seven, M D dash T dash zero one one nine Bayport Village Phase Two and come into force and take effect only on the date that a financial secured site plan and subdivision agreement has been fully executed and registered on title to the land subject of this bylaw. Sorry. And further that bylaw two thousand twenty one dash fifty one be re-approved with authorized transfer of the specific specified portion of reserve block ninety four fifty one M dash nine five three town of Midland, county of Simcoe that lies adjacent to the lands con, concording with the, sorry, with the town, with the Bayport Boulevard frontage of block twenty seven of the August two thousand nineteen draft plan of subdivision file M D dash T dash one one nine, which is intended to become the address lots five, ten, five, twelve, five, fourteen and five, sixteen of Bayport Boulevard to the budding landlord, sorry, landowners. Please don't ask me to read that again. I apologize if you didn't get it all. I need a mover and a securtor to get this on the floor. Moved by Mayor Strathairn, securtor, sorry, I didn't see someone.
Councilor Gordon? Any que, sorry, Mr. Far, did you want to update us on this? Or the CEO?
Sure, I'd be glad to update you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Through Deputy Mayor Ross, the rest of council and the public that's assembled. This is a file with detailed history to those with an interest in it. And very briefly, Caitlin Corporation, well, actually, this townhouse block sits in Phase Two subdivision of the Bayport Village Development by Caitlin Corporation. Of this one block that is comprised of four townhouse units was built under the terms of a conditional building permit. That permit was issued in November twenty twenty. Caitlin applied for it and understood at the time they applied for it, all of their obligations with respect to fulfilling the terms of that conditional building permit. It's apparent, as someone that wasn't here at the time, that the permit was issued to try to assist Caitlin in the continuing construction program to, to build this townhouse block. There are buyers and the expectation of staff at the time was that the entirety of the Phase Two subdivision, which this block sits in, would have been registered in short order. And for a variety of reasons, the Phase Two subdivision hasn't gained registration. I guess in, at least when I first joined the town, how we became aware of this block and encouraged Caitlin to seek avenues to register this block so that, that the individual buyers could take title to the units. Effectively, what you had was a block that was built on lands that weren't created so that they could be conveyed to buyer. So we spent about a year or so returning to Caitlin and asking them to make efforts to advance this. And relatively recently, we've seen some efforts. However, Caitlin and their consultants, M H B C, have been unable to produce the necessary information and documents that would normally be provided in quite short order for something of this level of simplicity. So the, the buyers, the town's kind of an interesting situation, an unusual situation and that the buyers have sought assistance from the town in trying to take steps that would affect the closing of their deals with, with Caitlin, enable them to take ownership of these units. It's not a situation that's very common because usually the, the builder is quick to finalize those de, details and those deals. And generally speaking, it's a straightforward exercise. However, in this case, for reasons unknown to the town, it, it has been difficult for Caitlin and M H B C to fulfill these requirements. So this can't go on forever. I think everyone agrees that that's the case. This report effectively lifts the holding on the property, which is an important threshold for allowing issuance of building permits and signing of the site plan that applies to this property. In order to finalize that holding removal, the town needs a site plan and subdivision agreement. This is the primary threshold for lifting the hold. And given Caitlin M H B C's inability to advance matters in a normal fashion, town staff have interceded and for those matters that fall within the purview of the town, we've reviewed the materials that have been provided and actually kind of exercised what would normally be the developer's role in reviewing the necessary clearances. So we've eliminated many of the conditions, not eliminated, I said satisfied on behalf of Caitlin, many of the conditions that apply to releasing this, these lands, but there are a number that remain outstanding. And those include all application processing fees and charges. I want to be very clear that not one dollar has come forward from Caitlin to advance the required applications. We don't have a subdivision revision application, which is an instrumental application on this file, so we need that. There are a handful of clearances left, which reside mainly with agencies outside of the town's responsibility. Those are, are pretty straightforward clearances presumably to gain. And, and the town requires an executed site plan subdivision agreement. Town staff have spent considerable amount of time acting on the behalf of Caitlin, where that would normally not be the case, as recently as receiving some last minute information on this file regarding this reserve. There's a second bylaw that's proposed to be approved here tonight. In addition to the holder removal bylaw, it's a bylaw to lift a reserve that sits at the end of the driveways of these properties. This reserve, it's kind of a common tool that's used to prevent development without necessary approvals. And later where we're at and, and in order to speed things through, given the, the this is the, the last council meeting before the election, we've brought forward that bylaw to be approved. It authorizes the removal of that block. We need some materials from Caitlin to finalize that. But effectively, there have been various questions about what remains to be done. I think I've outlined those. And there have been questions, as I'm aware of, the site plan subdivision agreement. Site plan subdivision agreement is a kind of standard agreement, which is again, required to be met and secures various matters for the town. And it secures a number of matters, including gaining those clearances around site servicing, landscaping, Canada Post. And I, I think there are a number of other stock matters in the agreement. And so, so our hope is that with the approval of this report and receipt of these outstanding items that I just mentioned, the fees, application, outstanding clearances, that this could be wrapped up very quickly. And so we're quite pleased to present this to council, but I think we're more pleased to present it to the buyers who, who have been awaiting these kinds of thresholds being met. We require Caitlin's cooperation to finalize this matter and we're looking forward, hopefully, to receiving that in the coming days.
Thank you, Mr. Far. How quickly could this time take to, if Caitlin was to, are there, sorry, I guess to back up a bit. Are they aware that this is happening tonight, Caitlin? And secondly, how, if they were to start with this tomorrow, how quickly could this process be completed?
Caitlin's aware, Caitlin received the notice of the lifting of the hold in accordance with the requirements of the Planning Act. Caitlin is, would, would, I think, within a matter of days be able to fulfill these requirements. Certainly, staff have expended work, like I say, without fees. So a lot of this work that's being done, considerable amount of Caitlin work, is done on the basis of taxpayer support. And so, so we expect that they could do those things and receive the site plan subdivision agreement and sign that back. And like I say, a matter of days, it's, it's in draft form now. We need to finalize it probably upon receipt of these materials, send it to them next week.
Thank you very much and thank you so much for bringing this forward. Hopefully, we can get to a quick resolve and, and we'll be able to have these people move into their new homes. Councilor Gordon?
Thanks. Very happy to see this come and it's moving forward. I know I've been riding you guys about this on anything to do with the town side. Can't really ride Caitlin. I don't, not allowed to talk to them, but clearly I get communications, I just don't reply. So it's nice to be able to try and match up what is outstanding and whose responsibility this is. Because this has just become mudslinging and, and press release rocket launches back and forth and it's just embarrassment to the town. And quite frankly, to Caitlin. So, I mean, everybody in here has some sin, I think. I'm really happy this is moving on. What I, I guess what I'm trying to understand here is do we owe anything to Caitlin paperwork wise for them to move on? I mean, I understand they owe us money, that was made clear right now. They haven't paid any to the town or any of the fees, but do we owe anything to them? But do we owe anything to them to kick this process off? Basically, if this was a tennis match right now, whose side is the ball in? And what exactly are we waiting for them to do? Um, just so everybody's clear, and mostly the public watching, or, you know, judging us by this whole mess.
Mr. Far?
Uh, thank you, Deputy Mayor Ross, your Counselor Gordon, uh, uh, just first off, uh, disagree with your characterization of the town's handling of the Caitlin files. Uh, the town has, uh, been available and worked diligently to try to resolve matters. And, uh, we haven't, uh, necessarily received the cooperation that would be typical in, uh, the development process from, uh, from an applicant for approvals. Uh, that having been said, um, the town, uh, requires, as I said, application processing fees and charges. We have yet to receive a subdivision revision application. The subdivision revision application is required for advancing this file. And, uh, we require, uh, clearances. I would note that there were, uh, many clearances that, uh, Caitlin has agreed to in a strat plan approval to provide, uh, supporting materials to the town, including letters from different agencies or reference to approved agreements or past approved reports. Town staff worked to assist Caitlin to, uh, scope out the conditions that would be applicable to this block, uh, but received no, uh, kind of cooperative, uh, responses in clearing those conditions. Um, so as I said, town staff interceded to gain some of those clearances on Caitlin's behalf. Uh, we're awaiting those things, the fees, the application, uh, the clearances, as I said, regarding Canada Post, uh, site servicing, uh, landscaping and, uh, and on receipt of those things, uh, we release a site plan subdivision agreement. That's typically how the process works. Um, the site plan subdivision agreement includes, uh, stock language and provisions to manage the municipality's risk. It's a kind of conventional document. And in this case, it will, uh, address a number of matters, many of which, uh, it's our hope and expectation will have been cleared by the time, um, uh, we receive the materials from Caitlin. And so portions of the agreement will likely be moot. So, uh, when we have that, we'll be releasing the site plan subdivision agreement to them, uh, looking for them to provide a signed copy back and, uh, any, uh, required materials that would be, uh, needed in the normal course. Um, and, uh, after that, the holding takes effect. And then, uh, Caitlin would be required, well, town staff will sign the site plan. Caitlin will be required to coordinate inspection with, uh, chief building official and a occupancy permit can be issued.
Thank you, Mr. Far. Call up.
Thank you very much. So just to be clear, council doesn't need to be involved in this. Now, we, you have all the delegated authority in your department and your team that as long as they come in with their check and all the requisite information that's outstanding, you return to them a receipt for the check and their site plan draft. They review it, sign it, get it back to you guys. You do every new magic hocus pocus and this thing can get registered and people can buy their homes away. High level, uh, layman sort of covered the process just for the people following along.
Mr. Far?
Uh, yeah, through you, Deputy Mayor Ross, Counselor Gordon, generally speaking, that's correct. And this report sets out, uh, all of their requirements and, and very clear detail. Um, so, uh, it's our hope that that's how things unfold.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, sorry, Mayor Strathern?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, through to, uh, Mr. Far. So if I understand this correctly, the town has interceded to move the process forward on behalf of Caitlin, since Caitlin has declined to do that, or has not done that. And, um, uh, I just, um, want to be clear on that, that the town is actually taking a proactive role here, where the town doesn't necessarily have to do that. Is that correct?
Far?
Uh, through Deputy Mayor Ross to, uh, Mayor Strather, and that's correct.
Thank you so much. Any other questions or comments? I see none. I want to thank you, Mr. Far, for everything. Uh, appreciate you, uh, extending all of Blanche. Hopefully that, uh, Caitlin comes through and, uh, we get these, uh, all these applications and everything that required to town ASAP. All those in favor of this motion? So carried. Thank you. Next up, we have moved by Counselor Downer, second by Counselor Cunningham, that the committee of the whole rise and report. Any question or comments? All those in favor? Oh, I apologize. Glad it's only my, I only have, uh, one more meeting to go. I missed the whole section. Uh, sorry, anyway, notice the motions to bring forward for the next meeting. It'd be our last meeting of the year. No? Any announcements to this evening? No announcements? Counselor Maine?
Uh, th- thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, well, obviously there's one concerning, uh, news article about a cyclist that was hit in a hit and run. The OPP has put out a press release seeking the public's assistance. Um, we use the term vulnerable road users because walkers and cyclists don't have the layers of protection that cars do with seat belts and air, air, uh, airbags. So, um, we obviously know that we have to do more to protect cyclists and walkers. Uh, but if somebody hits somebody and drives away, they've now committed a crime. And this is now elevated to a very serious matter. Uh, so if you know any information, please, uh, contact the OPP with that. Um, also on another sour note, uh, the COVID dashboard, the Simcoe Muskoka District Health Unit has updated their COVID dashboard. Uh, so if you want to continue to find out information about how things are changing and evolving, they're still monitoring the situation. Our current level is moderate. However, our wastewater signal is very high. So we do know people that are continuing to get sick from COVID in Midland. So with back to school, kids getting sick, bringing it home. We know that transmission is continuing to spread through our community. So please be diligent, diligent and vigilant. Uh, so, but on a more positive note, I just want to say thank you so much to the cultural staff for the amazing Indigenous Heritage and Awareness Week. We've had so many events, it's hard to even list. Many of us were at the sunrise ceremony the, uh, the other week, which was amazing. Uh, Elder Trish Manag was an awesome ceremony, eating the strawberry. Uh, make sure you eat the green part first. Uh, those were just some really, uh, awesome, uh, part to be a part of. Obviously, there's a, a more somber note, uh, on Friday with the day of reconciliation and look forward to the town, uh, from various events regarding that. And, uh, St. Maria Monk, the Huron also will be hosting some events regarding that day. So I just wanted to make note of that. So thanks, thank you for everyone who's involved and putting together, uh, fantastic, uh, events in the last week or so. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Maine. Any other questions? Counselor Gordon?
Thanks. Just a shout out, uh, for the Georgian Bay Food Network's Thanksgiving food drive, um, happening October first and second at the Real Canadian Superstore on Highway ninety-three. Uh, just to reiterate, the most needed food items they're looking for are cereal, granola bars, peanut butter, jam, canned fruit, uh, one liter juice tetra packs, canned meat, pasta and sauces, instant rice and soup. And for those of you not aware of the Georgian Bay Food Network, they're effectively a food bank, but it's set up like a little market. So rather than going in, getting a box or a hamper, um, the, I guess the feeling or the stigma is a little different when you are in need of food stuff. So you can show up at this market-like setting and, uh, and shop and get what you need. So they're, uh, they're operating, uh, this food drive. And I just wanted to make sure I call it out for people as we are shopping ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gordon. Counselor, uh, sorry, Mayor Strathern?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Uh, this is the last meeting of council before the election. Uh, there's one meeting post the election, but also I just want to say to, uh, the residents that the election starts on the eleventh, which is less than two weeks away from now. It runs to the twenty-fourth. It is a electronic vote. Either by internet or by touch tone phone, you will receive a package in the mail that, uh, provides you with a PIN number. You then use the PIN number and your date of birth to access the system. There will be a voter assistance center, I believe it's called. Uh, it's not a polling station apparently, but, uh, you can vote here. Uh, if, uh, if you're having difficulties and it will be manned, uh, through business hours during the week. And I believe eight in the morning, ten in the morning until six at night. Madam Clerk, is that correct?
Thank you, worship. The Voter Assistance Center will open October eleventh at ten o'clock. And then will be open during business hours. We'll have two Saturdays, October fifteenth and twenty-second, where it'll be open twelve to four. And then Election Day, which is October twenty-fourth, it will be open from eight thirty AM to eight PM.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So last comment would be, please get out and vote. Exercise your french fries. No matter what your choice is, be sure to vote. Thank you.
Your worship, well said. Any other? Last one? Yeah, yeah, quickly?
Thanks. Uh, as long as we're talking about the election stuff, um, it's important to note that last night was the Chamber of Commerce's, uh, Zoom all candidates for counselor candidates. There's a, we're one of the outliers. A lot of communities are suffering with, you know, not enough candidates to fill positions or just acclamations. And we have a, a plethora of people, uh, with a variety of passions. So I watched it last night online. It's also available on YouTube. So if you missed it and you want to get a chance to meet your, your, uh, council candidates, go to the Chamber of Commerce Facebook page or their website and you can see the YouTube video. And for those who want to watch the, uh, Deputy Mayor and Mayor Slugfest, uh, that's going to happen next Tuesday, October fourth. And it'll be recorded and put up on, uh, on YouTube. I'm just kidding. It's not a slugfest. It's very, very scripted. We get the questions in advance. We're all prepared to do our thing and there's no bare knuckle round, unfortunately. So, uh, but it is good, clean fun. And you get a chance to meet your, uh, your candidates, uh, before that online voting happens. So, uh, yes, definitely be involved. We'd love to see the sort of dismal participation in our electoral system, uh, increase with the availability of online and phone voting rather than decrease. So amen. Thank you, Mayor Strather.
Thank you. Any other announcements? I see none. I just want to quickly pass on to our monarchy. Uh, we lost our queen. Um, after seventy years, seventy plus years of rule and, um, it surely is a sad day, but, uh, welcome King Charles as our new, uh, ruling ruler. And, uh, long live the king. So we'll move on to the, uh, close this out. Moved by Counselor Downer, second by Counselor Cunningham, that the committee of the whole rise and report. All those in favor? So carried. Your worship, all yours?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Uh, next on the agenda, I'm sixteen, motion to adopt actions of the committee of the whole. So the motion moved by Counselor Prost, seconded by Counselor Maine, that the recommendation of the committee of the whole for the meeting of September twenty-eighth, twenty-two, be adopted as resolutions of council. All those, uh, in favor? Thank you. That carries. Just thinking about my grandson's birthday. So they're having a birthday cake right about now. So happy birthdays, Zach. Um, so now we have motions. Next item is number seventeen, motions for which notice was given seventeen-one. Moved by Deputy Mayor Ross, that the sidewalk on Howard Street between Woodland Drive and Penetang Machine Road in the town of Midland be renamed in honor of former Mayor George McDonald, and that a dedication ceremony take place in the spring of twenty twenty-three. Somebody cared to second that. That, uh, Counsel Roshevsky. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, worship. I'll, uh, try to hold together, but, uh, after sitting on council for twelve years, met some wonderful, wonderful people. Everyone I sat with, I respect wholeheartedly. It's, this is not an easy job. And, uh, one gentleman stuck out, uh, more than at most. And it was Mr. George McDonald. He was always a pleasure and, uh, he loved this town more than anyone. And we lost him unfortunately, but I really thought that I've owed it to the people of Midland. And, uh, I wanted to dedicate something to him. And nothing that George liked more than walking and biking. So I thought he pushed for that sidewalk. He wanted that sidewalk so bad for those kids to walk along Howard Street to get to, um, to get to, uh, my senior castics public school. So I thought, what better thing that I could do for my, my friend and, uh, great mayor of the town of Midland, George McDonald. So that was my reason for this. So I hope you all, uh, all support this. And, uh, I would ask for, uh, ask for, uh, everyone to please, yeah, to dedicate. I look forward to, uh, the dedication ceremony in the spring of two thousand and twenty-three. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Well said. Um, you're right. Mayor McDonald was, uh, quite a gentleman and, uh, very much vested in the, uh, in the community. Are there any, any comments, uh, saying none? Then I'll call the question. All in favor? That carries unanimously. And I'm not surprised. So with this, I'm going to push back from the table. I believe Counselor Downer is about to do the same. Apparently we now fit into the category of senior citizens. And since these motions deal with senior citizens, I'm going to go sit in the audience and listen. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you.
I was surprised.
Thank you. Um, I just have a question. The seniors, um, come in different age groups. Is it sixty-five for the town? Okay, thank you.
I was, I think I might be a senior myself. I know I am at the golf course, but, uh, yeah, thank you. So we have a no- um, notice motion, someone I saw that Council McGinn would like to move this. Is that correct? Moved by Council McGinn, that, uh, whereas Midland has reinstated parking fees for on-street parking and at the Midland Harbor parking lot. And whereas many seniors are on fixed incomes and therefore be it resolved that the staff investigate and implement a free parking pass for senior parking at the Midland Harbor parking lot. And that staff create a system following that, uh, can be, uh, sorry, that transit for seniors within the, uh, town of Midland be free. So it includes free parking at the harbor and free park, uh, sorry, free transit for seniors in the town of Midland. Um, I know we had, um, free transit for a while, did we not? Uh, Mr. Campbell, is that true?
Uh, Deputy Mayor, yes. And just as a, uh, I guess a point of order, uh, there, this motion was split into two. So I think you have two separate motions. And the reason we have split it is the dollar value, if you combine them, might be more than fifty thousand dollars, which council cannot, uh, make a decision on, given you're in lame duck position. So just, I'm, I apologize, but the last minute we had, we realized this and we've split this motion into two. So there'll be one motion for parking and a similar motion for, uh, the transit. So just give the Deputy Mayor a second to, uh, get the right paperwork. I apologize for that. And then, then back to, uh, to tri- transfer seniors. Yes, there was a, a grant that was given to the seniors' council, uh, for, uh, a trial of, uh, free parking. Or sorry, free, free transit. Uh, that happened earlier this year, very successful. And, uh, ridership went up during that time for, for seniors.
Fantastic. So when we offered free, more seniors were able to, uh, use our transit and they definitely took advantage. So that's fantastic news. So I'm gonna, I'll start, uh, start over. That, uh, move by Council McGinn, whereas Midland has reinstated parking fees for the on-street parking and at the Midland Harbor parking lot. And whereas many seniors are on fixed income and therefore be it resolved that staff investigate, implement a free parking pass for seniors parking at the Midland Harbor parking lot, that these changes be effective January first, two thousand and twenty-three. I need a securer with regards to this item. Counselor Prost, if you don't mind, any questions or comments with regards to this item? I have, uh, Counselor Cunningham, sorry, go ahead, Counselor McGinn. I'll start with you. And then I'll go to Counselor Cunningham and Counselor Gordon.
I didn't realize that I was not muted. Um, so to speak to this, I have to go back to, um, when it was, it was about three years ago. And I brought it forward because I wanted seniors to have free parking everywhere. Um, but the motion is great as it is. And I thank, uh, Mayor Strather for putting it in and bringing it up now. Uh, yes, it's so specific to the parking. This is a start. I think this is fantastic. Um, yes, seniors, they're the backbone of our community. And a lot of them have been here for an extremely long period of time. And they've invested their life and they've invested their taxes in, in our community, or maybe they moved here. But once they're here, they're investing in our community. And this is a really great way for us to recognize that, that there comes a time where you should be given some respect and you should be given a break. And it's not only about seniors who are, um, you know, are on fixed incomes. It's about the history of being a senior and everything that a person has to go through to become a senior. Uh, so it's not only for me about, you know, fixed income, but that is a distinct reality. I think this would be a great thing for us to do. And seniors often are the ones who have the time to bring their grandkids. So this is also age friendly.
Thank you, Counselor McGinn. Counselor Cunningham?
Yes, thank you. I also want to speak for this, uh, motion. I think it is a very wise motion, like Counselor McGinn. I tend to speak in favor of free parking for seniors. I think that when we look at the wisdom of our previous couple of councils and the councils ahead of us who are working to create an accessible and safe Midland Bay landing that has safe, solid surfaces for people like our seniors to be able to walk on, we have our- We have our rotary park on the one side of that parking lot. We have Midland Bay Landing having that waterfront path that's going to be accessible and lit in a safe and inclusive space. Having this parking, a free space for seniors to be able to get to both of those accessible exterior mental health improving locations is really important. So I'm very happy to see this. I do want to add one point, though. When you consider that 50% of our community is over 50, I think that now and in the future, moves like these that make our community age friendly, we can't afford to have our counselors step away from the table. I, I wonder if we could get the clerk to look into for the future and the validity of whether there's pecuniary interest in making a community age friendly, because I would like to see all our counsel at the table, moving these kinds of motions forward. We're going to see more and more need for this because in another 10 years, 50% of our community will be over 60. And this is just one step. I think it goes very well with the beautiful waterfront accessibility that we're going to have at Midland Bay Landing to be able to have people park, go in, maybe have a little lunch and then wander along in whichever direction they would like to enjoy our gorgeous waterfront. And I think being able to park right there, not have to cross roads is an essential part of that.
Thank you, Counsel Cunningham. Counsel Gordon?
All right, thanks. So I'm going to be the, the poo poo on council right now about this. The, the timing of this is super political and this is an emotional ask. And I actually find it a little rich, quite frankly, you know, that it was brought up in the first place on our last meeting. When I think back over the past two years, my attempts to get measly 15-minute parking here and that, and some counselors who are throwing themselves at this right now, we're fighting to have that clawed back at every opportunity for all of the residents. And now last, last meeting before election and we're giving away some parking to the seniors. Woo hoo! Feels real good. And I am not anti-senior and I'm not anti-free parking, as anyone who reads the news knows. But how many times have I listened to the cautionary finger wag from our mayor and our CIO about the dire consequences of free parking in the town of Midland on our budget? And here we are, going to give away some more free parking at the most expensive lot, the one we made a buck 50 an hour, you know, for, for our seniors, which make up 50% of the community. And we're only aging. At my core, I'm great with this. I'd like to see free parking for everybody. Just get rid of the whole parking system and let's just open the town up for free parking. But that would be a financially irresponsible decision to make right now as we are lame duck and about to move into a new council term with a whole bunch of new counselors who are going to be fresh and met with the challenges we've already saddled on them because we pre-approved a whole bunch of capital stuff for them. I think to pass this tonight and the way it's worded is staff investigated and implemented. I think we're hamstringing a brand new council before they even get started. And I can't support implementing this tonight. Look into it? Absolutely. If that doesn't go with my peers, because I'm willing to compromise, I'm a compromised guy, then I'll, I'll, I'll see the mayor's free parking downtown and I'll raise them free parking everywhere for seniors. Why would we just do it at the, at the, you know, the town dock? Why wouldn't we let them park in front of the, the juries when they got to go in and get their pills? Why do they have to park in the back lot for free? Let's, let's just let them park on the street so they can walk right in and not charge them anything. We do that for our, our veterans already. So I'm, I can go either one way tonight. If, if council, my peers want to just put this through and say investigate and approve, then I'll go for an amendment and let's just say make a free parking for seniors everywhere in the town. And it is what it is. I'd like to hear from our CIO about this, though. The alternative is I'd like to say, let's just have staff investigate it and bring it back to the new council and they can decide during budget deliberations, whether this is a responsible move or an emotional decision. That's just my, my input on it right now.
So do you have a deferral on the floor? Or what are you asking for, Counsel Gordon?
Well, I guess I'd have, it wouldn't be a deferral. It would, well, I guess we could defer it, but it could just be we reword the motion. So an amendment so that it doesn't direct staff to implement this. They simply look into it and report back to council, which would be a new council.
So we have an amendment on the floor that this not be implemented as of January 1st, that only investigation would take place. So that conversation would only, sorry, the mover and seconder fine with that amendment? Nope, nope. So Madam Clerk, how would I proceed? They're not. So it's no longer a friendly amendment. It is a amended motion.
Okay. So for, for clarity here, the clerk and I are just working out. So the amendment is that this be referred to staff and brought back for consideration by the new council. And then we'll need a mover and a seconder on that amendment and then a vote on, on that amendment.
Amendment on the floor, moved by Counsel Gordon. Could you read what that amendment would be? And then we need a seconder for regards to this item.
Just give it a minute here, please.
Yeah, well, one second.
My interruption. I know my screen is freezing on everybody.
We can only discuss the amended motion and I'll come, I'll go to you soon. It's on the floor.
Speak up, please.
I said, we can only talk about the amended motion and I will go to you directly as soon as we get a seconder and it's on the floor.
Mr. Chair? I do have the amendment.
Yes.
It's that free parking for seniors be referred to staff for consideration by the next council. And I believe we have a mover. I wasn't sure if you had a second.
I haven't had a seconder yet. We have a seconder for this motion. Counsel Post. And the Counselor McGinn, you had a comment with regards to this new motion. We're only discussing new motion, not the, the old one. If it's, if you go back to the old motion.
Yes. So the new motion, I think this is something that we had spoken about before. Oh, I know this is something we had spoken about before. And Counsel Gordon, I, I hear what you're saying. I hear your, your angst. I hear your concerns. I hear your, your budgetary concerns. And you spoke very well to those. For me, this isn't an emotional, an emotional emotion. I'm not the one that brought it forward, but it's something I did bring up three years ago, and then it was brought back to staff and that, that same time was when we got to see the signature. And I believe it was, I'm not sure if he was a counselor at the time, but so I'm going to just say Jim Downer. His name was on it when veterans got parking. It went to staff. And then I recall later, you brought up a concern that there was a lot of things that went back to staff pre-COVID and just at the beginning of COVID that we never got back. I believe this is one of those. Just like we hear where when you give seniors free transit, ridership goes up. It's only a start. It's, it's, it's a start. Yes, I would love for the free parking for seniors everywhere. This is one location that is a start. And I believe it would be the right thing for us to do, seeing that it's something that we had brought up before. And it's something where we all do support. Well, I believe we all do support our seniors. And we've already heard, like I said, that when you give seniors the opportunity, they use it. I, and I don't think that one parking lot, you know, being, it is, is the issue. I, I don't think that really is the big issue. I don't want to hold up the conversation about, you know, that yes, it's an election, but this is something that has been brought forward before, Bill. It, it has. And I know that you spoke to it. And I know, as you said, a couple of minutes ago, it is something that you do support. We don't really need staff to use their time. We could just, this is a decision that council can make. And I know you don't like pushing the buck. So let's not, let's, let's say that we talked about it before, didn't come back to us. We were going to talk about it and do something nice.
Thank you, Council McGinn.
Welcome.
Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Ross. I just wanted to point out that Counsel McGinn had been discussing the main motion and we need to be
Okay.
Sticking to the amendment.
We needed to stick to the amendment motion that this only staff will be, will be investigating free parking for seniors in the Midland Harbor. All those in favor of this motion? I see one. Yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Ross. We have, you need to call a vote on the amendment. So the amendment was strictly that free parking for seniors be referred to staff for consideration by the next council.
Yes, that's what I'm calling the vote for. Is that not what I, I'm asking? One second. Is that what's on the table? It's moved by Counsel Gordon, seconded by Counsel McGinn. I have any other questions or comments from other staff before I go back to Counsel Gordon? Sorry, any other counselors? Counsel Gordon? Sorry, Mr. CIO?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Ross. And Counsel Gordon asked for, you know, some comments from the CIO. So I, I would like to provide those on, on, you know, this motion. And again, we're referring it back to staff to, to do some analysis, which we would be happy to do. I do think, however, just, just for the context of what happened with parking, it's the, the big decision, and if there was any finger waving, I know we, we knew, we say that metaphorically from staff, it was to remind council of the consequences of the lost revenue around parking in general. The big decision that was made was to go with free backlot park. So free parking in the backlots was the big decision. And certainly we respected the decision of council to go with that. That was the big decision that was made. The fine tuning around parking, if you like it, was to provide things like free parking at the boat launch, which was again, I think, an enhancement that council felt was necessary. This particular accommodation, again, I think is an enhancement again to the parking system, but there's no question that I think council made it clear when we made the big decision, that was the decision that really had an impact on the revenues with parking and that we'll obviously have to consider in the budget. Some of these other ones I think are important. They will have an impact, but certainly not anywhere close to the, the major decision that was made.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Counsel Maine?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'm going to support this. I had some great feedback from a local resident who is an octogenarian. And she has reduced mobility, but she's not eligible for accessibility plates. And so it was like, whoa, that's great. We got these free lots. You just park and walk and, and some seniors that are 80-plus have reduced mobility and they struggle to walk from the back lots or the side lots to King Street. And so I think that's why we continue to monitor how we roll out parking and trying to be age friendly, trying to be considerate to the different user groups. And so I think that this, we're trying to tackle an issue about trying to create ease of access for businesses, for seniors. And it, for me, it's not really more of a financial relief, but I think it's more about a ease of use to try and to make sure that people can park as close as possible to the businesses or the banks or the services that they're looking on King Street. And we're looking at a blanket approach with seniors and that's a very widespread of young, middle and old seniors. But I think we're really trying to focus on some of the people with reduced mobility that are struggling to walk from the free parking lots to King Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, could you read that motion one more time for me? Just so we, I am completely aware what we're voting on.
The, the motion that's on the floor right now is the amendment.
Yes.
And it was moved by Counsel Gordon, but seconded by Counsel Post.
Yes.
That free parking for seniors be referred to staff for consideration by the next council.
Wonderful. All those in favor? One, two, three, opposed? One, two, three, four. Okay, we'll move back to the original motion. That was moved by Counsel McGinn and seconded by Counsel Post. Whereas staff, whereas Midland has reinstated parking fees for the on-street parking at the Midland Harbor parking lot, and whereas many seniors are on fixed incomes and they're therefore be it resolved that staff investigate and implement a free parking pass for senior parking at the Midland Harbor parking lot and these change be effective January 1st, 2023. All those in favor? Recorded vote, please. Recorded, we've asked for a recorded vote. We've already had, I feel we've had adequate discussion and I'm going to call the vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of council, you've heard the question. When I call your name, please say yes or no. Counsel Post?
Yes.
Counsel Cunningham?
Yes.
Counsel McGinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Ross?
Yes.
Counsel Oshinsky?
Yes.
Counsel Gordon?
Yes.
Counsel Maine?
Yes.
The motion is unanimously carried.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have next item up on the agenda. Moved by Counsel McGinn, seconded by, sorry, we'll need a second, seconder, whereas seniors are on fixed incomes and that staff create a system allowing that conventional transit for seniors within the town of Midland be free and that these changes be affected, be in effect January 1st, 2023. I need a seconder for this motion. Moved by, seconded by Counsel Oshinsky. Any questions or comments with regards to this item? Counsel Gordon?
Thanks. I'll add my comment that I wasn't able to get in on the last one because it all relates to the same thing. And that's quite, that, this is great. We can pass this. But let's not fool ourselves for a minute. New council is going to set the budget. And we can do this now and pat ourselves on the back and everyone can, seniors will all vote for us, but this could all die with the reality pill that's going to be the budget for 2023. So just, I want to make sure we're all in the same playing field here. We can approve this right now, but 2023 is next council's domain and there's a nuggly, really ugly budget that's going to come our way or their way.
Any other questions or comments? Counsel Maine?
Thank you so much. This is a growing trend that you're starting to see all across North America, even in Europe, where continuing to promote transit as a viable mode of transportation and fair relief or even creating free, it's, it's creating a lot of buzz. People are becoming more and more supportive of that. And we have our own evidence, as the staff just mentioned, that you make it free, the senior usage increases. That only strengthens our transit system and our transit ridership numbers is a key number because we get provincial gas tax funds based on ridership. And so we're fighting against TTC and the big, you know, 99% of all the fares going to TTC and our little Midland Penetang Transit System, our ridership numbers matter a lot. And so the more riders that we can get on the system, the more provincial gas tax funding that we can have, the stronger our system is running, the more frequent it can run, the, the more investments that we can put into it. And when we did our transportation mass plan a couple of years ago, we had people that came out and spoke so highly of the transit system because they rely on it for their daily transportation needs. It's so important. So anything that we can do to contribute, improve.
Not sure what happened there. Yeah. Any other questions or comments with regards to this item? I see none. All those in favor? Opposed? Benny? So Carrie, thank you. I believe I'll turn it back over to your worship to finish up this meeting. Please note that Mayor, Mayor Strathern and Counsel Gordon, I'm sorry, Counsel Downer has returned.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. We are now at section 18, which is bylaws, and it's moved by Council McGinn, seconded by Counselor Downer. The following bylaws being acted by law 2020-50, amend zone by law, zoning by law, rather, 2004-90 is amended for the removal of the holding H symbol on block 27 of the August 2019 draft plan of subdivision, which is intended to become addressed lots 510, 512, 514 and 516 Bayport Boulevard. Bylaw 2022-51, transfer of only that portion of reserved block 94, 51M-953 Town of Midland, Simcoe County, that lies adjacent to the land coinciding with Bayport Boulevard frontage of block 27 of the August 19. With the August nineteenth, sorry, the August twenty nineteenth draft plan of subdivision file M D dash T dash one, one, nine. Which is intended to become addressed lots five, ten, five, twelve, five, fourteen and five, sixteen. Bayport Boulevard to abutting landowners, transfer one foot reserve Bayport be passed and enacted. Council, you've heard the motion, comments or questions with respect to that bylaw, those bylaws. Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you very much. That carries. Very seldom I hear applause for bylaws passes. Next, we have moved by Deputy Mayor Ross, seconded by Counselor Gordon that bylaw twenty twenty two dash five, two being a bylaw. To adopt the proceedings of the regular council meeting held September twenty eighth, twenty twenty two be passed and enacted. Comments or questions with respect to the bylaw? Seeing none, all in favor? That carries. Thank you. Finally, the bylaw. For adjournment moved by Counsel Roszewski, seconded by Counsel McGinn that this regular meeting of council adjourned at seven thirty five P M. All those in favor? That carries. Thank you.